Judge.
Here.
Roy Charles Brooks, Commissioner, Precinct One.
Present.
Devin Allen, Commissioner, Precinct Two.
Here.
Gary Biggs, Commissioner, Precinct Three.
Here.
J.D. Johnson, Commissioner, Precinct Four.
Here.
Constancy of One.
Thank you. G.K., take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. So this afternoon is a work session and it's a special call meeting. And what we're going to do today is to hear presentations by Vaughn Postel. Then second, it'll be Turner Portier. I know we're starting a little bit late, but you will have an hour to do your presentation. So one thing, this is an open meeting. And so we're going to record that. And anyone that wants to come into this room to hear your presentation is allowed to by law. So let me ask first of all, we've asked the other presenter not to be in here. They have a right to be in here, but I don't believe that they are in here. Is there anyone in the room at this time that is with the Turner Portier firm? Okay, very good. It is not being streamed. It's being captured and it'll be on our website tomorrow. Okay, so you will go ahead and take.
Question. Who is this gentleman sitting at the table?
So.
Yeah, this is Kieran Chivaramo. He's with Broadus. He's the project manager on the project. So Roger is here with us. Roger with Levis is doing the medical home, so he's focused on that. So Kieran was led our team when we were doing the selection process. You have a tab that has not just the score, but it also has some summary information in there. And a lot of that was done by Kieran. So if you had any questions.
Didn't know who we were.
Sure.
So if you'll go ahead and introduce your team and then you can start.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to start and we're honored to be here today. We're really excited about this project. So we'll make individual introductions. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm project director. I've been in Tarrant County, live here for 22 years, so I voted yes for the bond election. And I'm excited that it's getting underway and, you know, really excited about the program, especially the behavioral health side, because I know that's such a great need that we have in the county. And we have expertise as well that we're going to be talking to you about today. My role as project director is to make sure we deliver on our promises. And to do that, it's resources, it's processes, and it's oversight, just making sure that everything we say here today is something we truly deliver on.
Yeah. Good afternoon. I'm Jeffrey Postel, owner of Postel Group Construction, living in Tarrant County in beautiful Alliance, Fort Worth, Texas. And I'll be the co-project director, working along with Jeff Jones. We've actually been working together here the past year. Postel, we built the clock tower for the University of North Texas. And Vaughn was our, was in association with us.
Our roles were reversed.
Reversed, yeah. We were 100% bonded, at-risk on the project, and Vaughn was a support team member with our company. And I've got a beautiful wife and three kids here in Tarrant County. And love being here and looking forward to an exciting project opportunity.
I'm Charlene Hade. I'll be your MWVBE coordinator. I've been in construction now for about 11 years. I'm really excited about this project and very honored to speak before you gentlemen and ladies today.
Hi, I'm Steve Scavla. I'll be pre-construction director for the project. Been with Vaughn Construction since 1988. My career has been nothing but healthcare, healthcare-related research throughout the state of Texas. It is my job to make sure that the user, Tarrant County, and your doctors get a facility that they want, and we do it in the most cost-effective way.
Guys, my name is Micah Haupta. I'll be the pre-construction manager for the project. I have about 24 years in the construction industry, in which half has been with Vaughn Construction, focusing primarily on healthcare and higher education. My job is to make sure I provide very detailed, very accurate estimates. Also, I want to make sure I enhance subcontractor participation, specifically Tarrant County subcontractor participation.
Jared Miller will be the project manager for this project. Going on seven years of experience in the construction industry, primarily in healthcare, life science, and research facilities. I was actually in a transition from the Houston office to the Dallas office when Mr. Jones told me about this project. So very excited to jump on board and pursue this proposal.
Justin Stanley, I'll be the superintendent on the project. Currently been with Vaughn for nine years, both on the QC side, or the quality control side, as well as the superintendent side of things. Recently finished up the behavioral health facility there in Houston, Texas with UT during the peak COVID. Excited to build another behavioral health facility due to the challenges that may arise.
Jeff? A little bit about our companies. I'll start with Vaughn Construction. I think we're a very unique organization. You heard it in some of our introductions. Our entire focus as a company and has been since 1988 is focused on institutional construction. So we build public projects for higher education, healthcare, and research facilities, and that's almost exclusively what we do. Because of that, many of the projects we do are very complex and complicated, and it's allowed us to really deliver, develop some strong in-house services to build those type of complex projects. We're only based in Texas, but throughout Texas. And we're currently at about 1,200 employees. We do, you know, a billion dollars' worth a year. So we're one of the largest contractors as well. Even though you may not hear our name a lot, that's, those are the facts. We've got a lot of experience in Tarrant County. These are some of my favorite projects that we've recently completed. University of North Texas at the Health Science Center. We've done many projects for them and for the UNT system. This one was especially important, right there on Camp Bowie Boulevard. Next to that is the TCU Harrison Administration Building we recently completed. And of course, all of the administrators have moved into that new facility. UT Southwestern is one of our good clients as well. Moncrief Cancer Center, we've done several projects over at that facility. So those are just a few of the projects in Tarrant County. Through that experience, we really understand business here and the subcontractors, and especially on the MWVBE. As I said earlier, nearly every project we do has expectations and requirements for meeting hub or MWBE goals. So that's nothing new to us, and we very regularly exceed those goals and expect to do the same here. Jeff?
Yep, so I'll talk about, I've talked in front of you before, and you know where I live, Fort Worth, FER, Tarrant County-based, and I'd like to talk a little bit about our people quickly. These three people will be on the project. Luis Legarda graduated from Northside High School in 2018. He immediately graduated and came to work for our company as a drywall helper and mechanic. He's now a project engineer. He's going to Tarrant County College to get a PMP Associate Degree. And him and I both just finished up about a $50 million UTSW Medical Clinic East of here, where we managed to QC the drywall package and the cussco ceilings package. Myron Frun lives in South Arlington, Texas, and I feel like he's literally probably estimated or built all of the southern Tarrant County fire stations and police stations. But Myron will be working as an estimator on this project. And then Michael Fider just finished up the JPS Mission Control Admin renovation that we just finished up a couple of months ago. And Michael lives right around the corner from me in Alliance, Texas. So again, these are the folks that'll be working on the project. These are Tarrant County people from our company. We are a JPS vendor. We've worked for JPS for the past four years, and we will continue to bid and work for JPS. So we're around Vaughn because we want some of that sauce. We want some of that medical research ability, that behavioral health ability. We want to learn from the best, and Vaughn is the best. They are the best builder of this type of building in the state of Texas. We have an official UT System Mental Protection Relationship that we're proud of, that has measurements and things that we follow and track to make sure that our company is growing capacity properly. And we take it serious, and Jeff and I meet very often about the growth of Postel. But believe, Postel, we're adding value to this job because of our experience on interiors and drywalls and the things that our companies are capable of doing. We're adding value to this team.
Jeffrey, would you talk about, a little bit about the project that you just completed, where you were lead and Vaughn was your minority joint venture partner?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So for the University of North Texas Systems, we just built a $4 million tower. So essentially, a clock tower in the middle of the southern Dallas campus. We were the 100% bonded, at-risk design builder on the project, Postel was. Vaughn was our support, in a sense, our support system for us right now. Again, we were fully at risk. It was all of my blood and pennies in the job. But I had Jeff Jones by my side. Every week, we had a meeting throughout an eight-month project to talk about, hey, you know, good, bad, the ugly. And ultimately, we delivered a perfect project for the University of North Texas System with the help of Vaughn. So that's the type of relationship we have. We've been working together for four years. Since that UNT Health and Science Center building on Camp Bowie, where we were a big part of the drywall package and the metal framing package on the outside for the metal panels, we've been working with Vaughn on, and I think right now, we're probably on our fifth or sixth project together, continuously over the last four to five years.
Thank you.
Okay, a little more about our overall team. I titled this slide, "Robust Preconstruction for Robust Team Resources," and there's a good reason why. This project has some challenges. First, let me talk about, the ones in blue are the folks represented here today from our companies. And then Postel's team, we put a little icon on there. You can see some of the roles they're going to fill Jeff's team. And what's important about that to us is they are truly going to be an integrated part of our team and have, you know, responsibilities to deliver with our team. And from that, they're going to get some training. Jeff's depth at CM at-risk type projects is not as deep as ours, and he's building his processes. So that's one of our big goals, is to help him get his people trained up. The things I mentioned, why this team and why this size team. This project is in the center of a very active campus, and we cannot interrupt any activities that take place. And to do that, you have to have your eyes on it, and that takes people 24/7 to be paying attention to what's going on. So an active campus. Secondly, behavioral health facilities are very unique. We'll talk more about that, so we'll dwell on it. But we recently completed one and about to complete a second, very large behavioral health facility. There haven't been many of them built in Texas. We all know that. So the things that we've learned, we're bringing to this project, and there's people on this team as a result of that. Thirdly is, I've been in the business almost 40 years, and I don't think I've ever experienced a more difficult and challenging time than we're in right now. It's labor, it's getting materials delivered, it's inflation. Just as I've said before in a previous presentation, it's, to me, it's like the old whack-a-mole game. It's just one problem after another. I don't know when it's going to end, but the thing I'm very happy about and proud of is we have delivered on every one of our projects on time and on budget despite those challenges. So that's our team, and we think it's the kind of team that's going to take to be successful in the project.
Is John Pemberton, did he grow up in this area?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Want to be out in the Hurst area?
Don't think in Hurst. No, he was actually from east Texas originally, but he's been in the Dallas-Fort Worth area for 20, 30 years now.
He has friends in our church that were named Pemberton that we knew real well.
Okay, advantages that we think we bring. The pre-construction phase of a project is the design phase, and we are widely recognized as kind of one of the best, if not the best, at this stage of a project in helping our clients get their projects designed in budget with high quality. Again, that's all we do is institutional construction. Behavioral health is unique, and it's not just enough to say that your company hasn't done this type of project. You need people that truly have experienced it. We've got that on our team. And we're confident that we'll be able to deliver a facility that's going to meet all the requirements that you'll have to meet to get certified. And finally, local resources and relationships. Jeff, joining our team was an asset to this. We consider ourselves a local contractor. We're statewide. But we live and work in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, so we've got the resources to meet your goals. What are we going to talk about today? Again, pre-construction services and how we maximize value of the project for you during that phase. Our insight into behavioral health-type construction, and how we work efficiently on the site to not disrupt activities.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you about our pre-construction philosophy. Before I get into that, I want to talk to you about our pre-construction team. So if you notice on the left side of the screen area, you'll see the pre-construction team. The one thing I want you to notice is it's more than just estimators on there. You have project managers, constructability, the 3D modeling team, superintendent. It's a complete, robust team with estimators and operations side. And what happens is, when we start construction, the operations team that was involved in pre-construction is going to bleed over and be part of the construction team. What this means to you is there's no handoff of information. It's a seamless transition from pre-construction to construction. No information's lost. So let me get into our actual philosophy on pre-construction. And my favorite cliche is the devil's in the details. That definitely applies to pre-construction. Let me tell you what I mean by that. The very, very first estimate, the most important estimate that we produce is going to be based on very little information. I may have some floor plans. I may have some elevations. I may have a narrative describing the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. Maybe some civil drawings that show the utilities and some grading. It's very little information. A general practice for most general contractors would be take a look at this information and give you a price per square foot. So for example, they'll look at the drawings and say, you know what? The electrical system is about $60 a square foot. And this mechanical system's about $75 a square foot, and that's what they'll plug in their estimate. But what does that buy you? What does $75 a square foot mechanical buy you? What kind of air inhibitors do you have? What kind of VAV system do you have? What kind of light fixtures do you just buy for that? You have no idea. At Vaughn Construction, our approach is to take this incomplete information and complete it using our historical data and jobs that are similar, filling in the information that we can actually quantify to get real values, apply real unit cost to it, to get to a real estimate that we can analyze and dissect, to make sure it's complete. Also, by filling the missing information, it forces us to ask a lot of questions early on that are critical to design, to make sure that we're actually estimating something that you want in your building. Steve's going to give you some examples of some of these critical design issues from the San Antonio State Hospital and other projects.
Thanks, Mike. You know, Micah keeps mentioning pre-construction. What is pre-construction? In the construction industry, pre-construction is a decision-making process. That's what pre-construction is. And your project's going to have hundreds of decision-making items that you're going to have to make that are going to affect cost, and they're going to affect schedule. I'm going to give you just a couple of the early decision-making things that had to be done in San Antonio. The interior wall construction. When we were building for Health and Human Services in San Antonio, they were saying that they were having problems with patients that were tearing walls up. So they had to have mockups to look at the type of wall construction so that they're not constantly patching walls all the time and spending money. And at the end of it, it came down to actually two layers of high-impact drywall that they put on every room because they didn't want to go back and have to do major renovations or major patching all the time. The other thing that we looked at in San Antonio, and we did lifecycle costs with a mechanical engineer, was water-cooled chillers versus air-cooled chillers. And in San Antonio and in Houston, they both selected air-cooled chillers because of the, they saw that over the lifecycle that they could do 15 to 17 years before they had to replace the air-cooled chillers. And so they thought that that was a good decision for them, and they decided to do air-cooled chillers in both facilities. The structure. So very early on in the project, we had the structural engineer, the architects, which were in the behavioral health facility guys that were the experts, which was A-plus on that facility. We looked at seven different types of structural options, and this was all done very early on in the pre-construction process. We had to determine what type of system that we were going to use there. And let me, if I could give you a visualization. If your tables here are long corridors, this was a 30-acre site that had star buildings, nine of them around, these large corridors that went down a 30-acre site. And so when you talk about the structure, if you increase the height of your structure, all of the skin on all of those buildings is also going up. So that was a cost and schedule impact. So we had to find a system that was going to keep the structure down narrow so that we didn't spend a whole bunch of money on the outside of the skin. And when we did that, we did the seven scenarios here. We eventually did a flat slab concrete structure on that project.
So earlier, I talked about how we take incomplete information and we complete it. I want to show you an example of this. This is that San Antonio State Hospital that Steve just talked about. At our very first estimate, this is the floor plan that we had to price the light fixtures, that and the narrative. So we took this, and like I said, we completed the information. Every symbol, every color represents a different light fixture. We use, again, jobs that we know are very similar. We plotted out a light fixture. Here, we can quantify. Here, we can count light fixtures. Here, we can price them. This is much more detailed than a, let's just carry a price per square foot for electrical. We also shared this with our subcontractors, who are helping us price and budget, asked them to critique it. Do you think we're missing any light fixtures anywhere? What do you think this is worth your pricing? Compared their pricing to our own historical data to get a more complete price. We do this for every single scope, not just electrical. It's done for the cabinetry, the floors, the mechanical system, the elevations. Everything is dissected and analyzed for the details that we need to have a real estimate based on real data. Okay, so detail's just the first aspect. I want you to focus on three words: detail, transparency, and collaboration. That is our full approach to pre-construction. The details do us no good if we cannot convey this information to you in a way that you can easily digest and understand. We want to make sure that you know exactly what we do and do not have in our estimate. We want to be transparent. We want to make sure you understand what's in our pre-construction process. Because we're transparent, now we invite the collaboration. Critique us. Design team, tell us if we misassumed the light fixtures. Tell us if we misassumed the flooring types that we assumed. Give us some feedback on the mechanical system, the pricing that we have. It's only by being detailed, transparent, collaborative can we be accurate, and we have to be accurate every time. My favorite analogy is every estimate we turn in is like a test. It's not a test that we can barely pass with a C. We have got to make 100 every single time, because you're making decisions on what you can and cannot afford based on the accuracy of our estimates, and we take that very seriously. The effort's there every single time to make sure that we're 100% accurate so you can make sound decisions. Don't take my word for it. This is a quote from the architect on that San Antonio State Hospital. His words: accurate, transparent, quality, proof's in the pudding. Next slide. Okay, so let's talk about, we mentioned earlier, it's a very specialized facility, very specialized products. One thing that we need to focus on to help save the project money is to make sure that we increase the amount of manufacturers that are specified for each product. The tendency will be to say, only this one manufacturer can provide this product. We need to research alternate manufacturers because it's capitalism. If you're the only manufacturer specified, you're going to increase your price. But if you think you're in a competitive mode, you're going to sharpen your pencil and give us better pricing. So throughout this process with the specialized products, we need to find competition to help us with the pricing. Jeff mentioned the crazy times are in. I want to talk about the escalation portion of it. So over the last two years, we've probably experienced, you know, different reports, 20% escalation. We want to do everything we can to mitigate and avoid escalation costs on this project. And I want to give you an example of what we did at our children's medical center facility in Plano to avoid those costs. The original plan was to buy the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the drywall off 100% construction documents that were coming in February, March of this year. But we were talking to the vendors. We kept track of the commodity prices and what they were doing. We're talking to peer groups, understanding that we're about to get hit with a tremendous amount of cost increases in January, February of this year. We wanted to avoid those costs. So working with the design team, working with the owner and the client, we decided to go ahead and buy the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, drywall, and some of the envelope off drawings that were pretty close to being complete in November. Doing this, though, saved the job $6 million of future escalation on a $305 million job. We did that because we kept track of the commodities. We knew where the market was going, and working with the design team owner, we were able to come up with a plan that saved us from hitting, increasing the price by $6 million. Not just pricing, there's also long lead times, and Mr. Postel's going to tell you how we will combat the long lead times.
Yeah, but it starts with releasing bid packages early in the process. You know, Micah hit the nail on the head with, you know, that concept and what can happen to how the job can save plenty of money when you do that. But I think across the board, we've got a great plan internally, but you have to create a culture within the project team. Trade contractors, the design team, everybody has to be on board with the urgency. It's an urgent situation. So submissions have to be approved quickly. Shop drawings have to be reviewed quickly, and orders have to be placed and get that material on the road and getting it here. Utilizing off-site laydown space and storage is very important. We want to give our trade contractors some flexibility and some options. We have 7,000 square feet here locally that's temperature-controlled indoors, where we can help our trade contractors bring light fixtures that get here early, but they may not have the space to store them, so we'll store them for them. And it's five minutes from the job site. We've got another 10 acres, seven minutes from the job site. Again, if you've got some outdoor laydown space that's needed, we've got it. And we want to have it close to the job site to where it can be set in place. So I'll move it over to Jared.
So along with that theme of long lead items and early release things, we're able to use virtual design and BIM modeling to actually build this job in a virtual space before any boots actually hit the ground. What that allows us to do is, with all these early decisions of mechanical equipment, piping, plumbing piping, so on and so forth, exterior skins, we're actually able to put those into the model, get some of the larger equipment released early and get that material coming so that there is no cost or schedule impacts that could happen. Along with that, we get the early trade coordination, so we're actually able to get the installers in the contract to put their models within our own model, to show the updated designs and kind of work around the clashes that end up happening through construction and mitigate that cost impact of rework. I believe Justin actually has a real world example from the Houston Center that BIM modeling actually kind of worked around some different issues through there.
Yeah, our UT project there in Houston, we had a, during BIM coordination, we realized that there was a VAV above an inaccessible ceiling. The only way to be able to access that is to put an access panel within that ceiling. It became an issue due to the fact that the patients could possibly climb up on this bolted-down furniture, open up that access panel, and get to the ligature point above. So in the BIM coordination, we moved that VAV outside this inaccessible ceiling so it'd be more user-friendly for the facilities and not so much for the patient. I'd like to turn it over to Charlene for WVBE.
Thank you so much. You've heard, let me scoot up a little bit. You've heard all the things that we're going to, that they're going to do for you, right? So what I'd like to tell you is just one thing, is one thing that we're not going to do. We're not going to assume that we know exactly what JPS is needing and your wants and desires for this project. Our main goal, first goal, is we're going to sit down with the JPS diversity team and evaluate those scopes for participation. And while we're doing that, we're going to, you know, get the prime contractors, those big prime contractors, get those guys in order, and then mix that in with our first and second, excuse me, our second and third tier contractors to develop trade contracting packages and partnering them up. And what I mean by that is like, for instance, if you have a huge electrical package, we'll get a big prime on that, and then we'll take a bite-sized piece off of it, if you will, hand that off to a qualified MWVBE subcontractor. And in addition to that, we'll be bringing this excitement to the community for the, for events that we're going to be holding. We want to bring the excitement that we feel for this project and the importance of this project to the community, to give them pride and just a sense of just a well-being and something that they have a piece of. And then last but not least, by doing what we say we're going to do, tracking the minority spend. This is a huge bond program. We don't take that lightly. We want to make sure that what we, you know, our contracts are in order, what we're spending, that we meet, beat, and or exceed. That might be the same thing all at once, but that we are doing what we say we're going to do by making sure we're tracking that minority spend. Jeff?
Yep, absolutely. So Charlene and I worked together on that, and you know, we take it serious, you know. If you know anything about our company, like we started from my kitchen table and me taking the bed off the back of my truck and putting a flatbed on it. So like, we get it, and we get how to help create success stories in the community here in Tarrant County. And, you know, we're proud to fly the flag. We're truly committed to meeting and exceeding the goal. And part of that is not just to procure and get those companies involved, but once they're on the job site, you've got to support them while they're there. So week to week, month to month, how are you doing, small contractor? How are you doing diverse, hey, are all your ASIs in, are all your RFIs in? You got your payoffs in on time? It's supporting and helping create success. It's supporting and helping create success stories on the job site and wanting people to grow capacity so they can do more work for JPS. The other thing is that there are going to be a lot of projects created on this job, I'm sorry, a lot of jobs created on this project. We want to make sure that our large trade partners are advertising job opportunities through this job. And so we will have, you know, job information sessions available so unemployed citizens of Tarrant County have a chance to work for these large trade partners on this job. So there's a lot of exciting opportunities along with the job that we feel like we can create for our Tarrant County citizens. I'll move it over to Steve.
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the specialized insight into construction of the psychiatric facility. You've heard today, the UT Continuum Care, you've heard the San Antonio State Hospital. Let me give you some background here. The Texas Health and Human Services Project in Houston is 284,000 square foot, 300 beds, double occupancy, community bathrooms, full-blown kitchen for the facilities, and this is the interior courtyard of the project. This is the San Antonio State Hospital that is a rendering, it's about 80% complete right now. It is built with HHS and A+, the Behavioral Health Facility. Frank Pitts is who I believe you're working with on your facility. We worked with him extensively with the owner and Harris County, or, excuse me, Harris County, and then also with HHSC on these projects. One thing I will say is that both of these projects came in under budget with the funds that were appropriated for them to be built.
Actually, Steve, before you move on, and I'm looking up the numbers that were in the RFP for the Harris County building, it says that the budget was like 97 and some million, and then the actual was 101 million.
That's correct. There were some additional owner change orders for additional work for us to perform on that project that took the contract amount out.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And then on the San Antonio, also, there was some furniture that was moved that they were going to buy. They actually moved it to some newer that came into our contract and out of a different budget.
Thank you.
So let's talk about projects here. You know, when you look at a psychiatric facility, or you took about psychiatric rooms, you've got embedded ones which usually occur in hospitals. You know, the children's facility that we're building right now has eight of them embedded in it. The Memorial Herman Trauma One Tower that we just built in Houston and finished up about a year ago, it's got four of them. And then the Centennial Tower that we broke ground on in Houston has got six. They're embedded in these huge projects, and their costs per square foot are nothing compared to a standalone facility. And when you talk about the continuum care and you look at that San Antonio, the difference in that is double occupancy versus single occupancy. Double occupancy rooms are going to be a little bit cheaper than the single occupancy rooms because the single occupancy rooms have their own bathrooms in it. Plus, they have that extra drywall in there to make sure that there's no damage or anything done to the project. So we can tell you from the different populations in that, the different construction that we've done with the recent ones that we've just built, that the standalone ones are going to be more expensive than the ones that have double occupancy and shared bathrooms.
Most, I mean, well, the whole deal of double occupancy versus single rooms, do you see that much in private, or do you see that primarily in public type facilities?
This is the public type that we've only built. I have not done any private standalone facilities. I've only done institutional ones. So when we got your RFQ/RFP, you know, you asked us to provide general conditions and fee for Scheme A. And I looked at the Scheme A kind of information that you showed us as far as drawings, and it's very similar to our San Antonio SASH interior courtyards. You've got a second-floor courtyard that is surrounded by building. And we had the same thing at the San Antonio State Hospital. And right off the bat, the things that hit me were, there's cost issues with that implication of having an interior courtyard. You've got to have waterproofing systems for a roof. You either have to have a slab that goes on the waterproofing system, or you have to have a lockdown paver so that the patients can't lift any of it up. The drainage systems, how the water gets out of that courtyard is very, very important. And the areas that are underneath of that courtyard, security cameras are paramount for that area so that they can keep an eye on the populations out there. And then also, construction issues, we need to make sure there's anti-ligature out there in the courtyards. We need to make sure that there's impact-resistant glazing, key switches so that for emergency maintenance, they can get in there. And then also, you want to have badge entries for nurses and everything. If the courtyard is off-limits, you want to be able, nurses to go out there and take a look at that. With that, Justin?
Behavioral health facilities are a whole different ballgame as far as construction goes. As they were mentioned, ligature-resistant this, ligature-resistant that, you're going to hear that a lot. But one scenario we have is a sprinkler system. There's only one manufacturer pretty much that makes the anti-ligature sprinkler system, which a lesson learned from my last previous project, Continuum Care, was the installer was putting these sprinkler heads in. As we were pressuring it up and commissioning, the sprinkler heads would randomly blow off. Might I add, this is almost a completed, or completed building, flooding these floors, we're had to do a bunch of demo work, and so on and so forth. Some of the solutions that we come up with during construction is utilizing the BIM coordination, as we previously mentioned, as well as planning and sequencing. The big one for Vaughn is mockups. We do mockups. One scenario that we had at the Behavioral Health Facility there in San Antonio is that we did a full-fledged mockup of the nurse station, primarily for safety of the nurses. During the mockup, we realized that patients could reach over and grab a hold of one of the nurses and potentially harm them. So there was changes involved within the, within the mockup, raising up the countertop, or the, yeah, the top so they couldn't reach over and get it. We also have a short video of, go to the next one, of the, the impact-resistant glass. We did a mockup there in Dallas, or here in Dallas. In doing, or coming up to this test, it was brought up to Vaughn that there's virtually, it would not pass the first round, which, in turn, it actually did.
Yeah.
So let me fill a little bit more on that. There was an AMA test that was down there on that slide. That's a human impact test. And that's if somebody gets a running start and tries to run through a window, you have to be able to stop that person with, and that they can't jump out of a three, four, five-story building and out the window. And with that, we did these impact tests and actually passed on the first rounds. I'd like to turn it over to Jared on the construction plan.
Switching gears a little bit to the actual construction site. So as we mentioned before, Vaughn Construction's very prevalent in building standalone facilities as well as building in and around occupied active facilities. So one goal is, we maintain the existing operations of the active facility. And one thing that we do to kind of mitigate these disruptions is perform a detailed method of procedure prior to any shutdown or outage request that we do to tie into existing utilities or anything that affects the existing facility. So what we do here is, as you can see, we kind of break it down hour by hour, day by day, of the actual activity that's going to take place. And then we send these out to the facilities, the end-users, anyone that's going to be affected by this construction activity, well in advance so that we can discuss, hey, what is this going to affect in the active facility? What do we need to change so that this doesn't disrupt active facility operations? So on and so forth. So with that, again, we have this, thanks, this is the actual site logistics plan that Justin and myself have put together to kind of talk through the different phasings of this job. And we have, again, the standalone facility and the active hospital that we've got to work around, Justin.
Yeah, so we approached it as a two-phase construction. We're going to redo the existing parking lot and maintain the road going around for the existing facilities, the Trinity Springs, you Urgent Care, the Family Health. We also put the, in the site logistics plan, we also put the crane location in here. Our plan is to do a two-tier structure before moving the crane around the building. We also have two entrances, one off of South Jennings and also one off of West Allen Street. We've put the project drop trailers in here as well as the ramp and access to the project. It's key that we have this project fence going around the perimeter that doesn't impact any of the existing facility. So Jared, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Yeah, so with that comes the approach to contractor interface. And what that means is, we have a dedicated onsite staff. So as you can see, Mr. Justin here, Moises and Michael are the actual field staff, and then myself, an assistant project manager and a project engineer from Postell are actually going to be assigned to this job site, will physically be onsite every day of this total duration of the job, and will be available 100% of the time. As you can see, there's a lot of phasing and a lot of active facilities that we have to work around. So obviously, some high-level things are going to come out of that that we can't mitigate from the front end. And what that means is, we're a dedicated staff that can answer any questions or kind of anything that arises to mitigate and maneuver around. With that, we've got, again, the site logistics plan that we continuously update. We send that out well in advance, kind of talk through it with the active facility, kind of make adjustments as we need to, and then work around them because this is their house, per se, and their area that they need to occupy and control. And then again, it is an active facility, so we have a mandatory patient-first orientation for all personnel that are going to be on our job site, whether you're working inside the renovation area or inside the standalone facility in the green space. Everyone will be aware of the patients that are going to be around and the high points of the construction site and be aware of the surroundings. Yeah?
That wraps up, other than a closing slide or two, I'd like to close with, we'd like to take your questions at this time, if you have any.
Are the, you've referred several times in your presentation about the San Antonio facility, and then I guess the Harris County facility that you're doing. Are both of those being funded through the state funds or through the county's funds?
I believe it's state.
State through state funds.
Health and Human Services.
And then they're turning it over to the counties to operate.
That's correct.
Are they the ones that are dictating whether it's going to be double occupancy for room or single occupancy?
I, there was a gentleman by the name of Stephen Glazer who ran the Harris County facility, and he did a lot of the decision on the types of rooms that they needed for the project.
Was he from Harris County or from the state?
From Harris County, yeah. And then the Health and Human Services had a lot to say on patient safety as far as the impact resistance on the walls and that. I will say that Harris County and Mr. Glazer had seen some things, and he was very instrumental in helping with the design of their project. The other thing about the Houston facility is their stay is only anywhere from seven to 10 days. That's all theirs. But when you go to the San Antonio State Facility, their facility can range anywhere from a couple of months till a lifetime that somebody is hospitalized there. And it's a big difference as far as those types of facilities.
What the needs are of the different.
And the needs of the different facilities, yes.
So then, Architecture Plus, were they a part of that as well?
Yes, no, Architecture Plus, yes. They were on the San Antonio State Hospital, and they were guiding HHSC. And then also, the doctors were also very, very instrumental in making decisions. I could give you a quick story. We were sitting in a design development meeting in San Antonio, and one of the doctors had come in, and he was late to the meeting. He said, "I apologize for coming late." He goes, "I have got a patient that I've sent to the hospital three times in the last two weeks. She keeps eating the baseboard." So she was going down, and even though you had pick-resistant caulk on all of the baseboard, she figured out somehow how to pick the wood, and she was eating the wood, and they had to take her to the hospital two or three times. We made the recommendation that they tear all the wood out in her room and put cori and boulder to the wall at the bottom so that she wouldn't be able to pick that. So those are the type of things that you're going to run into and the type of patients that you might have, you have to make a decision.
So did, so a quick question. The San Antonio Facility versus the Harris, or the Houston Facility, two different types of operation, one is long-term and one is short-term.
Yes, sir.
And so you're saying that the state actually was the one that funded both of those?
Yes, sir.
Closing comments?
Closing comments. We want to hit the ground running. We've got a plan for that, working with Rodas and the JPS team. You know, a kickoff meeting and a planning session so we're all on the same page. It's really important. Existing facility, we've got to understand the site conditions and what the limitations we're going to be held to, which we understand there will be. We want to make sure your budget's sound. We perform very early program estimates to give you guidance on where you stand. That helps you make good decisions early. Every public institution has unique aspects of their procurement processes. It's important that we really understand that before we get the process going. And then finally, we want to make sure, from a diversity standpoint, as Charlene mentioned earlier, that we understand that, kind of what, it's a big program, it's not just one project. We want to fit into that overall program and contribute. So that's what we would hope to get started in the first 30 days. Just a reminder, I think if you check our references, which we hope you do, you'll find that there is no one better in pre-construction services than Vaughn Construction. Second, we've absolutely got experience in this type of facility, and it's extremely important that whoever you select does. And then lastly, we're local. It's very important to me, as a resident here for, as I said, 22 years, that the name I leave on the facility is, you know, I'm going to be proud of it, and I will be involved throughout. So thank you very much for your time. Any questions, Jared?
Yeah, I did have a question for you, Jeff. So for the San Antonio State Hospital project and then the, I guess, the Harris County Continuum Care Facility, what were the MWBE goals? And then where they met?
Steve, I don't know the statistics.
I don't have the information offhand, but we can.
You all can send it to us.
We can send it to you.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Considered more of an outpatient-type facility with no longer than a 23-hour length of stay. So these are the patients that are going to be coming in, they're assessed, and then once they're assessed, for example, if someone comes in and they're, it's drug-induced or something, then they will assess the patient, they'll go through kind of a detox, they'll meet with the staff, meet with the docs, and then they'll determine what's the next step for that patient. Any emergent need, if a patient is hurt in any way, they could do some kind of basic work there, but they may have to take them over to the emergency department. But these are patients that stay less than 23 hours.
As I recall, there's only about 30 rooms. How many rooms are there in this?
Yeah, there are, yes, there are rooms. We've adjusted the model some, so I have to get really back with you on the exact number of rooms. But a lot of the space is real kind of general open space. So some of the patients, when they come in and they're observing, they're, if you go up to the PEC right now, it's where staff can observe them walking, and so they're not specifically in a room, but they're in a kind of a large, open area that may have a.
The chairs.
Yeah, that they're in. So some of it's big open space, but there's, you're probably right about 30 individual-type rooms.
So where is this new psych emergency center to be located? So where is this new psych emergency center to be located on the campus?
Yes, sir. It's it's gonna connect directly to the Trinity Springs Pavilion.
Okay.
It's on the Allen Street side, so there's kind of two phases, it's gonna be a connector so that we can connect into Trinity, directly into Trinity Springs, and then the PEC will go more or less along Allen Street. And like they've mentioned, kind of the two.
Will there ultimately be a connector between the PEC and the Behavioral Health, the new Behavioral Health Center?
Tower.
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 There can be, but what we've identified is this would be a PEC that would be in operation for about eight years, then the PEC would then move into the new tower, this building would be repurposed. There's much more efficiency in a PEC that's on the first floor and then a tower directly above.
Okay. And I, and and we've talked about this at length at the planning meetings that Commissioner Brooks and I have been at. I am still very much in favor of moving the construction of the tower up significantly. You know, Derek just kind of mentioned, we're talking eight years before the tower's supposed to be built, and that was the Blue Ribbon Committee's top priority. So I'm really having a disconnect. And and the same thing with the medical homes. We're building one, but I don't think we're scheduled to build the next two or the next two after that for two or three years. And that, I think, as a court, we're gonna need maybe look at that and talk about that too. You know, and I guess the thing that I would like for us to be doing, especially during the next session of the legislature, is seeing if we can't get money from the state, we've tried this last time, but we ought to be trying to get money from the state to build the tower and then let us manage that. And that could be a part of filling that deficit that's, you know, I think the last estimate was about $2 billion versus the 1.2 billion that we originally thought we were talking about spending.
And in that Harris example, is that what they did? They got the money from the state through the ledge?
Yeah.
Okay.
As did San Antonio, as did Dallas.
Oh, forgot, that's.
Now, some, you know, some of the beds that were originally scheduled for Dallas are supposed to be North Texas, but that's bullshit, it ain't gonna happen. We won't get any of it. Or if we do, it'll be very limited.
One thing, addressing some of that need in the new tower, not the Behavioral Health Tower, but there will be med psych beds, and and that's really a very, very high need at JPS. So where you have patients that come in that have dual diagnosis, that are coming in for surgery or they've got other medical needs, those are the med psych beds, and we are putting those beds in the new tower. So there will be new beds going in that are focused on.
But the thing that concerns me is, for all intents and purposes, we're talking about building a bed here or a building here that will not be the in-service for our emergency room for our mental health. Because it's not gonna connect to the, I mean, either that or it's gonna once again be that we're building the emergency room for the psych across, totally across campus for where our emergency room is for all the trauma patient-type things. And that just doesn't seem to me to be a good plan from that standpoint.
The, I think part of the development, I mean, I'm not saying we couldn't do a connection to the tower, that's something that's still being evaluated, but there's a lot of work that was done with Architecture Plus, with the input, when the, with the staff, on where is the best location, what's the highest need, and the PEC currently is the highest need, because right now, the capacity is about no more than 30 patients, and they sit on 60 today. So this is a huge need that, again, the building will transition later to something that's connected to Trinity Springs that could be used for transitional care and some other things that happen further down the road once we get the behavioral health.
So will you have to understand, even with this conversation, where does our partnership with Meadows come into play?
They're in this throughout. So Meadows is working, especially in the front end, and they're working through the design process, so developing what are the needs, what are the key planning units, how many beds do we need, how many, they were very involved in this process, and how many care stations do we need?
They've opened the ROP panel.
They're they're very much involved, they're in just about every meeting that Zilly is involved in, Meadows is as well. They mentioned Architecture Plus, Frank Pitts, he's nationally known, and so they, he works very close with the Meadows team. And Meadows is continuing on the project, so as we develop, even out in the medical home, Meadows is involved. PEC, the future, and also in these med psych beds that we're talking about, Meadows is is involved in all that process.
I would think, I guess we have another JPS planning meeting this Thursday, relatively soon, I'd like to see. It says Thursday.
Executive steering, executive steering's on Friday. You may have a different meeting.
I have on here the JPS Joint Finance Planning Committee meeting.
Right.
Is that at City Club?
No, sir, that's that's the kind of board-type meeting that's at JPS. Then the executive steering meeting is on Friday the 5th.
Yeah, that's a week from Friday.
Okay. Well, I think fairly soon we need to bring that summary of where we are now back to the full court, just so that.
Just getting ready to.
JPS can get a full hearing on what I think is going to be a displeasure in the timeframe you've got now. Maybe wrong, but maybe right. Why don't we take a five-minute, why don't we just come back at about 2:30 and we'll start the next, the next one. I think we're ready to to get started. Take it away.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name's Nick Barker, General Manager for Turner Construction, been a part of the JPS program on other projects in previous years, but excited to be here and hopefully the opportunity to work with you going forward. We have an agenda, but would love to have any questions along the way, we'll definitely time at the end for questions, but we hopefully address all the items of interest through our presentation. What I wanted to share regarding this specific project is Turner Construction and Pottery, our joint venture, you know, this job to us is beyond the sticks and bricks. The mental health and awareness of our staff, our people, and our family is at the forefront of everything that we do. So our CEO, Peter Dabron, even mentions that when Turner Construction builds projects, our our venue and the portfolio of business that we do are projects that heal families and not divide. And this is clearly a project that is is about healing families and healing individuals. And so that's very genuine in the jobs that we go after, the jobs that we pursue, and the jobs we put the full force of what Turner Construction offers. And that's what this is. So we're very, very appreciative of the opportunity and hopeful that we'll be able to partner with you on this project. As as who we are, each of the individuals will introduce themselves when they when they speak, but really what I just showcased is that what this team brings with the Turner Pottery team is a combination of national, not just healthcare, but behavioral health and mental health expertise, along with local presence of understanding the local jurisdictions, understanding JPS as an entity, and understanding the local trade partners. So we feel that this team combined just really can provide the best that both organizations have to offer and provide value to the Commissioners Court of JPS. Sharon?
Thank you, thank you, Nick. I'm Sharon Douglas, owner of Pottery Construction located in Fort Worth. I've been amongst the Turner team for about 15-plus years now, and what do we do? We started out with the Turner School of Construction, and here I am today. Still, look, I'm still under a mentor-protege relationship. However, with our relationship brings about more relationships. I look forward to doing your project with the Turner team.
And thank you, Sharon. And the only thing I want to add to is that we very much recognize in the partnership with RODIS, and that's a very, very important component, and just understanding that it is all a team, and we understand the right channels of communications and how to navigate through as we solve problems together. And the biggest thing is our team want to do is make sure that we bring the challenges in a timely manner, but bring solutions to that. So it's not just saying we have an issue, it's an issue, and how can we, how can we bring solutions to the table?
As you can see here, we have several projects that we've done together. I like to point out, after those 15 years of hardcore learning through the Turner School of Construction, I actually did a project with them called Bell Helicopter. I got my first broodie boots on the ground and got excited because I did integral concrete, which I probably found I would admit. So so I can actually point that out. And then I did the Project American Airlines Integrated Operations Center where I was a structural and flatwork concrete contractor. As you can see, we've done millions of dollars of of volume in the city. Tarrant County has been surrounded with over 350 contracts that we have with local Tarrant County partnerships. We look forward to building our MWBE participation, and we'll continue to do projects like these, and we look forward to doing yours.
Sharon, I assume that this little United States flag next to your picture means that you're a veteran.
Whoa!
As is Mr. James Glass on our team as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stacy Rudd, and I'm a registered architect in the state of Texas. I spent the first part of my career designing hospitals, and about 15 years ago, I made the move over to the construction side, so I've been on the construction side building hospitals ever since. I'll be your project executive on this project, and our our team is very excited to get going. We're gonna start out and talk a little bit about walking you through the process of how we plan to build this project. And one of the things that's really, really important to us right now is communication. Early release packages has been something that's been number-one thing that we have to overcome in our industry. We feel like we've got a really good solution for that, and we'll talk a little bit about that more as we get on down through the slides. We're also already thinking about how we would attack this project, and knowing that it's an active campus, we have really assembled an A-team that's done a lot of active campus projects, and then knowing that the existing capacity of the psych hospital is something we want to address as we move through it also. So our entire team will start from day one in pre-construction, and we will go through the phases of SDs all the way until we get to the GMP, and we'll, all of us will be involved with reviews and communication, setting up our schedules, logistics planning, and then we'll get up to the point where we're getting ready to start construction, and we'll launch, and we'll have our field team.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Brent Geis, and I'm a senior project manager for Turner. As you can see up there, myself, James Glass, Patrick, and Carlos, we all start early on in the pre-construction phase and then transition into construction. So as being kind of the day-to-day communication between James and myself, you know, the goal is to get us from the design phase to breaking ground to successful completion. And so that early start and continuing on is something that is is truly important to myself as well as the rest of the Turner team. Nick, I think you're gonna hit on logistics here.
Sure. Right now, I think everyone can relate from any project that they're working on, that supply chain is one of the biggest concerns, just being able to have the cost and schedule assurance that the equipment, the material that we procure, because of everything that's going on in the country, is gonna happen on time and when the contractor says it's gonna come. What our company can offer, and we think this is probably the biggest differentiator or one of, is that we have an organization within Turner called Source Blue. What it is in very simple terms is that they, all their job is, their sole responsibility is supply chain management. So they are daily talking to the manufacturers, the warehouses, the distributors, all of that, and what happens is they take out two out of the four middlemen. So from a cost standpoint, you can get it more efficiently from a cost perspective because you're taking out two layers, and from a margin of error, when you're handing things over four or five times between the distributor, the manufacturer, the warehouse, the subcontractor, more error can happen. So when you eliminate that, and we take the full responsibility and risk, the full warranty, all that comes with it, but we can provide some serious value add to our client, both from lead times, cost assurance, and frankly, just overall coordination of the schedule. And so again, I feel it's a big differentiator, we'd love to talk in more detail about that, but we have several several case studies of, you know, anywhere from 5% to 10% savings, sometimes more, and, you know, 10% to 20% on schedule based on the lead time. So that's a big part of the pre-planning, is understanding, you know, identifying the specs for those equipments, light fixtures, whatnot, early so that it can be procured.
I'm James Glass, I'll be the general superintendent for this project. I would also like to point out that Source Blue is not only a resource for pre-construction and procurement, but also field operations, and JPS has already seen one benefit of it. We did the JPS ANG remodel, and obviously have a schedule in the middle of our suites, and so we have a real, real tight schedule. Well, we had to sign Siemens to install some owner-provided equipment, and like any construction, you know, getting started up, getting a contract signed usually takes a few days. Well, we had a schedule we wanted to meet, and we were committed to JPS to meet the schedule, so I knew who in Tennessee to call it, and Source Blue, who told me who to call in Michigan that worked for Siemens, and we had to sign a contract the next day, and their installer was on the site by the next week, and we made the schedule. So it's not only a benefit of procurement, pre-construction, it's a benefit in the field as well. So walking through our site here, I have experience, we have experience at JPS, knowing our experience based upon what the information we've got, we've we've put together a beginning logistics plan, you know, very tight campus, you know, the main tower, the medical examiner's offices across the street, very busy streets, shipping and receiving in the back, the cup is right there, plus Trinity Springs, there exists a facility right there. We're gonna, so knowing all that, we've put together a plan that that is least impactful to JPS patients, staff, and the public around it. These are potentially places we would park across the street off-site that we would would come under our plan. We would also install the fence where we keep public safety as paramount plus patient safety, also being right up against the existing Trinity Springs. We know security is very important to that portion of the facility, and we, based upon also our experience, we all know, we know all the JPS processes for getting our security clearance, our our keys and and cards to get access, and about that process, about how to go and how to get it, how to get those, and who to talk to. We already know that we have to have impact-resistant drywall on on partitions that separate the patients and the public from us, we have to have fire-rated plywood both inside and outside, we already know these things because we have experience at JPS. So as we go through pre-construction, this plan gets further developed along with JPS, so we have the least amount of impact to the patients, to the staff, and to the public around the project.
So you can see up on the screen, what we've kind of put together is our milestone schedule. We know there's about six months or so worth of worth of pre-construction that are anticipated, you know, anticipating a break ground around January-ish or so, culminating in a August, rough, July, August 2024 completion date. Stacy mentioned earlier about some early release packages, and based on recent experiences and the the supply chain, that's something that we actually, we do truly recommend, earlier we can release some HVAC packages, lighting packages, you know, any of your mechanical, electrical equipment like that, anything that has, they call it a Dante chip, like within the actual equipment itself, and that's the chip that's been causing a lot of the supply chain issues, it's in pretty much all your controls and everything like that. So anything that we can release early makes it to where this day right here is much more achievable. So you got electrical equipment that's 52 weeks lead time, which is insane, you gotta, you know, come up with ways to really make that happen. So the earlier we know about the issues, the better we can we can control them. One other item we really want to hit on here is that we realize that a critical piece of obtaining the certificate of occupancy is your joint commission inspections. So we really want to highlight that really starting 2024 is where we're looking to start scheduling those joint commission inspections, start having really those conversations. So that way, come end of Q1, we start early with our 80% inspections, and then come into Q2, we're we're looking for our final inspections to do the turnover. So that's that's really our milestones that we're really looking for, and I'd like to ask James to kind of explain a little bit how we do it day-to-day.
So working in pre-con with Joe and and the designers in JPS and Brent, we come up with the milestone schedule, which is the optimal schedule. Well, you say, well, now how do we make it work? So how do we get schedule surety? So that's why I come in as a superintendent, with manage, the day-to-day management of the work and the subcontractors and trade partners. We use pull planting, and you might ask what pull planting is. Everybody knows it's easier to pull a rope than try to push a rope across the front yard. So we try, we have a a method of pull planting where we come and bring the trade partners in, they get buy-in to the process, and we plan from milestone to milestone, and we plan it out, and then when we work it backwards, so we know it works, and and it works within our timeframe and meets our schedule. works within our timeframe and meets our schedule. We then break it into six-week looks. So we can communicate with y'all, the owners and the clients of, well, here's our plan and you know where we're going. And then we break those six weeks into weekly work plans that we review ahead of time. So we know exactly what, how many workers we need, what material we need on site, and ensure it's there. And we use that weekly work plan as a daily measure to see where we're at. Did we get everything done today we were supposed to do? Are we a little bit behind and maybe need to work a little bit over today? So we can maintain that schedule. Or did we develop an opportunity where we can jump ahead? And we use that weekly, weekly work plan as a measure. And we communicate with our foreman in the field with a daily huddle where we keep them in the field and we go out and meet with them in the field. We don't bring them in the office. We keep them in the field where they can be with their crew. We can keep them productive with their work. And then we also manage the prefabrication plan that we came up with Joe's team during prefabrication. So all that means for schedule surety is because I'm working with it every day, you can come into my office in the construction trailer any day of the week and I can give you almost the day-to-day update of where the schedule is. Because we know from minute to minute, day-to-day where we're at because we are involved in it from day one.
So my name is Joe Strube. I do pre-construction. And just to, just to reiterate, these guys, with bringing them into an operations, into a pre-construction role, really simplifies the process. It makes it so that when we go to launch from shovels in the ground, this team is already moving 100 miles an hour. They already have all the headaches figured out and resolved and communicated with you and collaborated. They know their project before shovels ever move. And that is schedule certainty. And that brings my team in for cost certainty in this world where, you know, is it going to show up on time? Is it gonna cost what we think it's going to cost? That's what, that's what this team helps provide you, is that ability to go through and know this project inside and out. And we start in that research mode. You know, the librarian hat comes on and we know your standards. So that when schematic drawings show up and there's nothing on there, we know what you're going to put in there. We know what the crash rails are going to look like. We know what the wall of finish is going to be, what the, what the floors are going to look like, the ceilings, all of those things. So that when we provide you a schematic estimate and a design development estimate, all those estimate iterations through that process, it's, it's numbers you can count on. It's numbers that you guys can make decisions on, that you can, you know, that, that, with the people that you represent, that you can, you can help facilitate, right? That is what we do. That is where we provide. We give you a system cost breakout that lists all the packages. It is transparent. It is everything you can see. If we believe there are 27 doors on the job, that's going to show 27 doors or we'll show you how much each of those run. And we go through and we just make sure that we focus on the systems, right? We have that ability to pull those Source Blue folks in and we can do an analysis on this mechanical system, this electrical system, to really hone in on what maintenance-wise will last you years and years to come. And upfront has a great return on its value, right? In addition to all those things. And finally, we go out to the market, we G M P it, we bring all those bids in. That analysis between trade partner and trade partner, you, is there for you guys to see. And it is a transparent process through the whole, throughout the whole process.
I'd just like to set this slide up for Joe. With our company being the largest general contractor in healthcare in the United States, and the largest mental health care general contractor also, we have a lot of experience that we've seen out in the field, from the design side to the construction side. So this slide just talks a little bit about how we want to make sure that we're suggesting materials and design to our trade partners and to our design team about anti-legature points that we've experienced in the past. And so Joe will talk about that.
So, so really like it's a value proposition. It's not one or the other. It's one or the five others. And that's really where that we get the ability to look at. Is it impact-resistant boards just down the corridors? Is it impact down the corridors and in the rooms? Is it five foot up? Is it all the way up? Are the access doors like, what are the four options for access doors? Are they key locked? Are they, you know, just control or are they out of reach? Those are all the things that you really start to go through. And so this like diagram really goes through like a simple things as, you know, wardrobe shelves that are permanently fixed, that they don't move up and down, that they, that they're attached, all those simple things like that that we can have this conversation on. It can really get into the, the details that there are options across the board to consider that because of the advancements that have happened in this, this industry in the last couple of years, that really being at the forefront of that helps Turner provide that information to you.
And Patrick's unable to be here today due to some surgery and not being cleared to fly. But this slide really gives me the opportunity to showcase how early James and myself are really getting involved with the pre-construction effort and some of the efforts that we're looking at. You know, we've all heard the saying, plan your work, then work your plan, right? But how many times does that really get implemented? That, that's one thing that we really do try and implement. If you couldn't tell from the pull planning, the daily work plans, the huddles, you know, you're really playing your work. We found that makes the construction effort that much more efficient. On the pre-construction side, what, what's some of those things that we do to really help make that plan? And one of them is constructibility reviews. You know, Turner being a natural presence with some subject matter experts like Patrick, you know, local subject matter experts, we pull on those resources to really help us help the design firm. You know, we don't want to just be your contractor. We want to be your partner. You know, we want to give our feedback, help you think through some things. You know, a lot of times when you're designing, you might be looking at it and then it just takes getting away, getting the bigger picture to really maybe see something or another perspective on it. And that's what we want to help be for the design team as well as the commissioners, is that other perspective. You know, we, we've got kind of a list right here. Not going to read a word for word, but a couple of things that might have been picked up in some past constructibility reviews for psychiatric facilities as well. You know, looking at things like the corridors. You know, we know that patient safety is a key in the psychiatric hospitals as well as the safety of the nurses and the, the physicians and doctors. So looking at items like line of sight, you know, is there a, a column maybe placed where a patient could hide behind, potentially either injure themselves, injure one of the, the nurses or one of the physicians, right? So looking at items like that early on, help us to help the design team to build a better building. Couple of other items that we want to really highlight is, is knowing, you know, the facility itself, your waiting area. What all does that really entail? And is that kind of a triage space where you give the patients a safe space to really be intake into the, the facility? Is that Sally Port areas also allowing for safety? We know that the safety is one of the key, key items that really everybody needs to look for in one of these facilities. You know, one item that I was thinking about earlier today is that really, I, I think could set this project apart, you know, just the, the existing facility with Trinity Springs. You've got a courtyard out there. You've got some patient rooms, potentially on the outside of the building that could potentially face our construction site. While I think construction's really cool and it's exciting to see, not everybody might think that same way. And, you know, and it's not going to lie, it's sometime it's not the most, I guess, soothing sounds that you might hear from a construction site or even see, right? And so we all have construction fences that we put around for safety. A lot of times you have mesh. So why not put like a, a graphic on a mesh like a park scene or something to really just, if somebody's looking at that, you know, from the patient's side, they actually feel like this is a comforting area for us to be in and not just a construction site itself. So those, those are some areas that I think sets Turner apart. And, you know, just those little considerations. Some other items that I think set Turner apart are, are M W B B E and the development that we're trying to do with those partners, which MC would like to hit on.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Carmen Temes and I am a community and citizenship director. So I handle community outreach and deal with our minority trade partners. We truly are committed to building up the communities that we build in. In that Turner has always, whether public or private projects, we have always set 20% as our goal. No difference, right? So we have started to look at the packages and considering the 25% goal, which was given, we start to look at the different percentages and what that would look like. And we feel comfortable that right now with the information that we have, we could easily reach 30.4%. It's something that we hold true. It's part of our DNA and our value system. We truly believe it and it carries through from project to project, even in our partnerships.
This is something I've been waiting to talk about. First of all, so many times small contractors get invited to outreach after outreach. What are we looking for? We've got to make a change in the way we deliver to the community, the small contractor. We can't just put one person out there and say, okay, go do it. We all have to be advocates for the small contractors. That means continuous conversation. We look at the relationships we have with not just the community, but with the chambers, with the other organizations, R E C A, R B C A, NEMAC and so forth. And personally, I'm very closely connected with the Fort Worth Metropolitan Black Chamber. Phase two, strategy. I'm still considering myself in an M W B B E situation, but not only that, I'm a mentor protege. I don't take myself out of it. Why? Because I'm continuing to learn. Why would I take myself out when there's so many great companies? Turner being the company of choice, Prefiteri for myself, and I'm that mentor protege in this, though I'm the joint venture partner. I plan to learn as much as I can from start to finish. That's pre-con and that's the closeout. Now we have in our procurement system, this is something that a small contractor needs to be evaluated. Where are we today? Start to finish. We start from that firm's profile and go all the way through. But I want to point this one out. Accelerated payment plan. This is necessary for a small contractor to survive. It's called textura. That means that that invoice is turned in, that contractor is able to track it, and they see exactly when their money is going to be delivered. Compliance tracking, start to finish. Our start is when we go to the meetings, to the outreach, when they sign their names and we start reaching out to the family. We start the project and throughout the project, we'll be tracking them to make sure we keep it real, we keep our promise.
And Sharon, MC, before we, yeah, I'm sorry, keep going.
Oh, go ahead.
Just about the construction school.
It's okay.
Okay.
So we, again, taking a three-pronged approach to everything. We look at our community commitment. We invest in the future workforce and then our trade education. So in our dealings with the ACE Mentor Program and Cristo Rey, it's stimulating that interest in STEM programs. And we even go farther down into our grade schools, right? With King's Academy, we have some great programs that we do. But it's all about inspiring that generation and the interest in it. Then we have our Turner School of Construction Management, which we are incredibly proud of. 52 years we've been doing this, which again, shows our commitment to our trade partners. And that has, we have $30 billion that have been awarded through that program to our graduates now on a national level. And we have by now, because most schools have been finishing up, a little over 30,000 graduates, which we're incredibly proud of. Others have started that, others have started to do that, but we were the, the ones that did it initially. I'd also like to point out that in our economic development, during COVID, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, we had 400 contracts to our minority trade partners with a total of $200 million in volume. Going back to our Turner School and how seriously and how we get to those 400 contracts, our Turner School of Construction Management partners with the community. And so this year, we had it at Dallas College. Next year, we will be partnering with Tarrant County College next fall in order to get that going. And again, exposing a different group, making it easier. So we rotate it as we go along throughout the years.
Have you looked at the possibility of using Cristo Rey in Tarrant County, Fort Worth, Cristo Rey Group?
Yes, we, we partner, yes.
The answer is yes. Oftentimes, we, we balance it between Dallas-Fort Worth, Dallas-Fort Worth, but, but absolutely. We've been a long-time partner with Cristo Rey on a national level.
On a national.
Much bigger than just Dallas per se. So absolutely.
Yes.
Presently, Prefiteri Construction is involved with T C C D where we're taking interns. We'll have two interns by the start of the new semester. We're really evaluating the process right now to make sure they get the credits that they're looking for. We're working with T C C D on the southeast campus and also on the south campus. Thank you.
So day-to-day communications. I am the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, 24-hour day in the middle of the night contractor interface for all field operations.
If you can't get ahold of James at 2:00 AM, you call this guy. Yeah, no, James, I just really want to highlight that between the two of us, we'll take care of you. We'll answer your questions. We'll take your calls. Yeah, I'm no stranger to having commissioners call me direct as well, doing a lot of county projects itself. So we recognize that our clients, our J P S, the commissioners, the citizens of Tarrant County. So we want to make sure that y'all know and feel comfortable to call us with whatever you may need.
And we don't have a two-handed monster here. Brent and I have worked together enough. I respect his intelligence and his abilities enough that if I have to defer to him on something's cost, things like that, I'm most comfortable doing that. And he does that for me on field operations. So we make a pretty good team, working together and, and making sure we get the project done and making sure you get your needs met. So stated several times, we've worked on the campus. We know who to call. At the par marshall at J P S, we have a problem. We know how to go get keys when we have a door problem. We know how to schedule work ahead of time. So nobody is surprised when something's going to happen. And that includes direct contact with maybe the, the head nurse in that area if we're working in an existing space. So our goal is we get our project accomplished, but the least disruption to your service. We're, we're not here to change it. We're coming to, along, come alongside your process and adapt to it and be successful.
Yeah. And that really lends to, we want to be an extension to your team. County Commissioners, J P S, the hospital, you know, we want to be extension and help you improve your facility to really create a world-class facility because we know that's what this has capability to be. One other thing that we wanted to highlight was that we really want to be there and offer solutions. I talked earlier about constructibility reviews, you know, and that is meant to offer those solutions, offer a different perspective and how to get there, you know. So we want to, to offer those solutions. I often coach a lot of my teammates that, hey, if you're going to come with a problem, you better have two or three solutions along with it. So that way, you're not starting from a blank slate, but you've actually thought through it. And a lot of times when we think through it, sometimes those problems just work themselves out right then and there.
So contractor interface, we can use all the places here. I'm where the rubber meets the road, the buck stops here, you know. I'm the, on the, from the client side, I'm where the buck stops. I'm accountable for it, but I'm also where the buck stops coming from the trade partner side. So I'm responsible for all that client, the trade partner interface, which includes quality and production and safety and mentoring our minority business, minority trade partners. It's not just a program we do in the office. We mentor them in the field to make them successful in the field and show them how to do their operations in the field. So it's an overall program that superintendence is involved too. But safety is very important to J P S. Know that because of work there. We're not looking to change J P S systems. We are looking to enhance their system, you know, optimize our performance, you know, use a systems-focused approach and have full engagement. Our company, our company motto, but it's also our program, building life, living injury-free every day. It's something that every Turner employee lives every day and that we transfer to our trade partners because everybody needs to go home with the parts they came with that day. Nobody needs to get hurt, but we need to produce the job on time in a quality manner with the cost that was allowed. So that's all part of it. It's all a three-legged stool, production, safety and quality. It all works together. So our project experience, again said, we've worked on your campus. We know where the tight spots are. We know who the people to talk to. We're also available when you have a problem. When we had the snowstorm, we were working on J P S angio. And a couple of J P S guys called me because they knew I was big in Boy Scouts. They needed cots to stay in because they're on 24-hour operations, which J P S does when there's a weather problem. So we gave them cots, no big issue. They had a place to sleep on site. We also helped out by doing five days of 24-hour day fire watch on the main hospital tower because all the fire lines were frozen. So we assisted, us and our trade partners assisted J P S in keeping it in operation. So nobody had to worry about fires, anything like that. And the hospital was fully functional. Where that's, things we're glad to do. When clients have problems, we're there, Brent and I are there to help solve them. If we can't solve them, that's when we call Nick and he can put us onto something that can solve them. So we have a lot of active experience on the campus.
So along with that active campus experience, also comes some experience with secured facilities. You know, both James and I have worked in some unique environments. facilities. You know, both James and I have worked in some unique environments, um, via hospitals. Um, James has worked on Trinity Springs prior. Um, I've done some detention centers as well. All active campuses. So we understand the importance of that security, that safety, making sure that we're communicating day-to-day with the facility to make sure that they know where we're going, we know where they're going, and we can work together as a team. Again, back to that being an extension to your team. Um, lockups, as a lot of everybody's aware, are a critical component of construction because it actually allows you to see and put your hands on something that's actually go up in the building before it's finalized. You know, it's a whole lot easier to catch something upfront than when it's already put in place and then you're trying to change up 20 rooms. One of the items that we did at Baylor Scott and Wayne Irving, um, a hospital bed tower up there was, did a cardboard room lockup. Uh, we had a space that we were able to utilize and we actually built out an entire patient room, but instead of using the actual construction products, we built out a cardboard. What this allowed was positioning. Uh, we had the doctors and the nurses actually come up, put their hands on everything, make sure things were right height, um, kind of figured out where the, the lines were coming out of the walls, figured out where, um, some of the other, uh, bed facilities were, and actually had them kind of rearrange some items. So this really just helped to gain acceptance from the doctors and the nurses who may not have been on the design process, but they're the ones who have to live with the day-to-day. And just getting that buy-in early on, uh, really helped to give them a product that they love. Um, one of the things with Turner is, um, you know, having a national presence and having projects all throughout the nation, very some, very similar to, uh, what we may build here at J P S that offer those go-and-see opportunities. You know, so if you have a, a project that you've heard about that is very similar to this, you know, reach out to us and see if we can help get you out there, um, whether it be one of ours or somebody else's. We probably have some contacts that are out there to really help get, get you out there to, to see it. You know, being able to visually see and visually look at, um, items that you are considering putting in your building is one way to really just make sure that you get the, uh, best product for your needs. Uh, so what a item, uh, or one project very similar to that is a Cape Fear Medical Center. Um, we, that was a project from a couple of years ago. Uh, while it may have been, uh, a few years back, you know, having that ability to maybe go and see that project and actually talk to the people who are, uh, day-to-day operations, figuring out what's worked and what doesn't will just help give you a better design in the long run.
So a couple of things to leave you with as a project superintendent before I turn it over to Nick. Uh, number one, um, this project comes at a time when our country's realizing that we have a, a national crisis in psychiatric healthcare. And, uh, the general public in America thinks they know psychiatric healthcare. Well, they don't. But Turner Construction does. We're experienced at it. We know how to do it. We can work with U.S. partners and the designers and do that job. The other thing is, is, uh, this project's real important to me. I started this, took this day in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, in the wee hours of the morning to get here, to be here for this presentation. Cause I'm a resident of Tarrant County. I, I live in precinct three and, uh, Tarrant County is, uh, my favorite place to build in the world. And I'm going to ask you as a project superintendent on behalf of Turner that you give us this project because I'm the guy that can make sure your vision comes true on it.
Nick. It's hard to follow that. I'm not sure I'm going to try to replicate that level of passion. I might not do it a service. Uh, but he's genuine and I hope you, hope you recognize that, that he does, uh, live in Tarrant County and every day I talk to him about a project, he says, I want to build in Tarrant County. Uh, uh, just regarding this, that the, a very big component of this project that we have not spent a lot of time mentioning is the design team. And we have had experience, uh, both Pottery and Turner with Architecture Plus and Gensler, both here locally and nationally. So from a learning curve perspective, we think that we'd be able to hit the ground running. So a lot of good lessons learned and experience with both design firms. And.
Wait, 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 wait. Back up.
Yeah.
Talk about some of these similar projects that you have done, behavioral health projects like this.
Just in general or specifically with the design team?
In general. Tell, tell us about your experience in building behavioral health projects. Somebody said you were the largest in the nation. Uh, talk about it. Prove it to us.
You bet. Stacy, I might bring you up here on this. So, um, I myself have not. So I'll be very direct and frank, but our team has and we do have the resources for it. And so when it comes to lessons learned, Stacy, if you want to share some of the lessons learned and experience that you've had over the years with behavioral health, then I can add to it.
Sure. Yeah. As, as far as Turner goes with being ranked number one, I mean, we're, we're in, in E N R magazine ranked number one by the volume of healthcare projects we've done nationwide. So we can send you all the, that, those stats and show you also the same stat for behavioral health hospitals nationally. Uh, personally myself, I've done about almost $3 billion of mental health construction, uh, around the country. And one of those projects is Barnes Jewish National, Barnes Jewish Christian in St. Louis, Missouri. That was a $2 billion project that had, uh, about a third of it was all psychiatric emergency and, and mental health. Uh, there's, there's several others that I could name. There's one in Houston that I, I, I built for H C A that had, uh, psychiatric emergency wing to it. And so if there's specific questions about any of that construction, I'd be happy to, to elaborate.
And that's one of the benefits that we have with Patrick, who's on our national team. And so he eats, sleeps and breathes all the behavioral health. And so we get to lean on him, which is a huge benefit for having a family like Turner where we do truly have those national resources and any project along the lines that pops up, he's on it. He is our, um, go-to for anything that maybe we haven't encountered before or haven't seen. And so he's our brain trust for any of the behavioral health experiences. And he has a couple of other folks with him who always will put together big national panels for any of the healthcare systems to come together and share lessons learned and share experiences they've had or what they would, you know, what they would use again, what they wouldn't use again, or, you know, pitfalls of this sounded like the next greatest thing and really it ended up being a stumbling block for us.
And one thing I just want to make sure too is that as, as much experience as we have and that we share, I want to make sure that it's important to note too, that we do understand the importance of listening. Every job is unique. We've done a lot of some similar things per se, but it's important to listen and understand what's, what's important to J P S, to Verdas, to the architect and to the commissioner's court. And so there's, you know, this team is humble in that regard and passionate, no doubt, but is humble in some of the hardest working people that you're going to work with.
We brought this slide because this was part of the attachment that we put in when we originally answered the R F P when it came out. And what we wanted to do with this is help clarify the numbers that we put in for our general conditions and for our fee and for everything that was there. So we just put this matrix up to show where we spread some of that money around. And we can skip over to the exhibit D that we actually attached to our R F P. And on that exhibit D, we still have, um, our percentage of, of general conditions, which is 2.1 million, our fee and our insurance. And we still feel very confident that those numbers are what we need to build this project with.
Yeah. Just to land on Stacy. So just to make sure there's no misunderstanding. In the R F P, we filled out the form exactly as requested with the numbers, exactly as requested. In the presentation, there you go. So this is what was filled out from the beginning. When we were asked to submit our presentation slides, we did not include that in our presentation slides. We just had the, to show what stuff we, the, for the general conditions that we had in it. So I didn't want it to cause any confusion. This was always part of it, still part of it, and we are confident, stand by the numbers. There's no changes. Those are our numbers. So just want to make sure that there's, uh, no misunderstandings on that front. And happy to answer questions because we want to make sure when we do leave that there's not uncertainties on that. Uh, just in closing for both Sharon and I together, uh, I'll start by saying you've heard a consistent theme. So when you hopefully look for a, a general contractor, there's schedule assurance, there's safety and there's budget. Those are the, those are three pillars of a successful project. But well, this team, the Turner Pottery team is looking to be more than that. We're genuinely looking to be a partner. And you've heard it a few times to be an extension, extension to the community, an extension to Tarrant County, an extension to J P S. And that's, uh, that's genuine. That's how we operate. Um, and, you know, we want to, we, we recognize that this is a marquee job, uh, for the, for the county and for J P S. Uh, and, and, you know, we're giving you the best that we have from the staff resources to make it, make it successful. So we very much appreciate the opportunity.
From a standpoint of minority participation, I can truly stand here and tell you that Turner has been wonderful when it came to me discussing where do I want to go next? I'm talking about capacity, bonding. I was concerned about joining up with Turner for the second engagement to make sure that I can in turn move on to another opportunity. Nick and I got together and we talked about bonding and I can assure you, now Turner is assisting me in bonding, I have no holdbacks in going to my next destination. Engaging the community, that's for all of us. As I said before, we'll all be together. We'll all push it. We'll all make sure that everyone is included from the commissioner's court all the way through J P S to the Broadus-Levitts team to make sure you know who we're pushing with. So we'll get everybody engaged. That's our job. We look forward to doing your project.
Um, I'm just going to add to what Commissioner Brooks asked for. I don't know that even after the explanation that we received, but I have the fullest understanding of some of the specific projects that are even listed. Um, I guess this would be in the R F P response. So if you could send those specific examples, that would be great. And then for the, what was your M W B E goal? I understand that, that your minimum is 20, but for each project, what was your M W B goal? And then if it was met, and then if not, what were some of the constraints that limited your ability to do that?
And as I understood, so I think as I understood, in this particular instance, the goal that was set by, I guess Broadus, like by J P S was 25%. You're saying you're looking at a minimum of 30%.
Thirty point four. Yes. Thirty point four is what we're confident. As we've broken them down currently, and of course, once project is won and we get deeper into it, that obviously changes a little bit and we might end up with more, but that's a big one. That's a minimum.
Let me be sure I understood, Commissioner Allen. I think what you're saying is go back on some of the other projects that maybe you described and say, okay, the goal was 20, uh, we hit 30.
Sure. And we had shown, do we, we didn't put that in the slides, but it was on the R F P. We do have a, a page and we're more than happy to resend it where we've listed projects. Sorry, I need to stand so that I can see her. Where we list projects and we list, this is the goal that was set by the client or by us, right? Either way. And this is what we ended up at because exceeding expectations is what we cry on.
Okay.
Because it is that commitment to the community and the, and our minority trade partners. We look to make sure that we, as we break down the packages, we have as many as possible, right? To be able to put teams on the right projects in order to build that future capacity for them as well.
Yeah. We'll send it to you. No problem.
Other questions?
Let me double check my statements.
Okay.
Let's see.
And to Commissioner Allen, it was just, it was that page, I just want to understand of projects that we've had where the goal was here and then those that we were exceeded, the, the one that was in the R F P?
Even these that are on here? There may be something else in the R F P that I missed.
We'll, we'll.
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I think in those examples, some, in both presentations, I kind of heard mental health buildings. I'm not sure I heard specifically emergency center of mental health. Uh, because I know we're, we're eventually talking about a, a 300-bed facility, but right here, we're talking about the mental health emergency. It has some very limited type of use beds, but, um, that's, that would be the examples that I'm looking for and not specifically just towers.
Okay.
Other questions? Any closing comments?
No closing comments. Just appreciation. Thank you.
Thank y'all for very much for spending the time and coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. I like to go talk about it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, everyone.
Where are you living, Prees?
Bedford, right? Almost in Hallwood and Brown.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Not far from him.
Yeah, I think we could see each other walking from that time. If I walk for him.
Thank you.
How much time you got?
Uh, about 160 days.
Great to see you.
How can I count?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Cool. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you. I had rotated a couple of weeks ago today. It's been up and down. If we'd had this interview yesterday.
Good afternoon.
I've been here, but I probably.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's going pretty good though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. We got into conversation there.
So how long did you, how long did you live over there?
Uh, about almost one or two years.
We built our house very far away in, uh, Calhoun, first block south of, uh, where Dr. Moore's office is.
Yeah.
We've been in it now, I guess, since, uh, '85.
You turn there north on Shea, you broke down north. I live in those houses up there.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Mania, any comments?
Not at this time. What we need to do is adjourn.
We can do that. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye, J D.
Take care, J D.